Let's clerk, we call the roll please.
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Y'all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Come on and join me. So we have a proclamation tonight. This is always fun. So those, and many of you in the community know, we survive on volunteers and volunteer spirit. And this week is no difference. What we have here is the Monarch Project, the DuPage Monarch Project. So whereas pollinator species such as birds and insects are essential partners of farmers and ranchers in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollination plays a vital role in the health of our national forests and grasslands, which provide forage, fish, and wildlife, timber, water, mineral resources, and recreational opportunities, as well as enhanced economic development opportunities for communities. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy biodiverse ecosystems. And whereas the city of Warrenville has managed and promoted wildlife habitats and pollinator gardens on public lands throughout the city for decades. And whereas the city of Warrenville provides residents with conservation assistance through the Environmental Advisory Commission to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection and maintenance of pollinators and their habitats on public and private lands. Now therefore, I, Andrew Johnson, Mayor of the city of Warrenville, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens that June 16th to the 22nd, 2025, is Pollinator Week in the city of Warrenville, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance. Thank you very much to the Monarch Project, and if you'd like to say a few words. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. That's really nice.
Thank you very much.
I don't have a prepared remark. We're thrilled that the city of Warrenville wants to honor this special resolution that they made several years ago. And it shows the active participation that Warrenville government has for really good, sound environmental practices. So we're thrilled. We partner with Warrenville in Bloom in many of our activities, and we're just so happy for the volunteer spirit and the support that we have here in Warrenville. Thank you so much.
There we go. Citizens' comments. We now have two residents who wanted to sign up. First is Christopher England. If you'd be so kind, come on up to the podium. Tell us your name and have at it for a few minutes, if you would. Three minutes, we ask, if you can keep it to that.
Well, hello. My name is Christopher England. I'm a new, well, almost new resident. My family moved from Mesa, Arizona, just the beginning of May, to help out at Emmanuel Baptist Church, where I'm an associate pastor with Senior Pastor Dale Williams. So we are excited to get involved in Warrenville community. I just wanted to let you know that we're here and to thank you. We've been participated in several Warrenville events already, including most recently, the Multicultural Festival that was held just this past weekend. And we certainly, the kids enjoyed it, and we enjoyed it. We enjoyed being a part of it. So we just wanted to say thank you for the warm welcome. Warrenville has been really nice. The people, everyone we talked to, from the Dunkin' Donuts to the City Hall or the library, everybody has been very warm and friendly to us, and we appreciate that. My family couldn't be here. It's bedtime for my little kids, and so it's just me today. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck finding that home. There are plenty in town, so I'm sure you'll find one. Bob Seibert. And Bob, again, you know the expectation, three minutes if you could.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. As I stated two weeks ago, there are three reasons why the property tax revenue is thousands of dollars higher than the tax levy. So you're levying one figure, and you're bringing in thousands of dollars more. Tonight, we'll look at the first of three reasons. This is due to fake economic development. Real economic development is bricks and mortar, but the most important part is new taxpayers. Fake economic development, no brick or mortar, no new taxpayers, just new taxes. On the chart in the front, on column one, shows the EAV increases year to year from the actual tax bills that you receive. You can see there, the EAV increased from 5% to 14.86% on specific properties. These figures are used then when the TIFs are closed, as in 2010, that dictate then the property tax. If there are no new taxpayers with the situation in 2010 in TIF II, this means the existing taxpayers will pay the increase. Can't go to anyone else. Goes to the existing taxpayers. Bill Farley is the, for years, the District 200 finance guy. From the early 1990s, I worked with Bill and the superintendents on the TIFs. In 2010, at the end of the year, I went to the annual TIF meeting and talked to Bill. I discussed the fake economic development and the impact on the taxpayers and the impact on the long-term tax increases in Warrenville. Bill smiled and said, "Bob, if someone is going to give me $500,000, I'm going to take it." My reply, the taxpayers didn't give you $500,000. It was stolen from them through fake economic development. After 15 years, this figure is not $500,000. Over the last 15 years accumulated $10 million from fake development. And it wasn't just the school district. The other taxing districts also benefited. Park District, Fire District, Library District, DuPage County, Forest Preserve, everyone. And the taxpayers paid. City of Warrenville, on a small portion, not their total portion, received over $50,000. That was in 2010. Accumulative to today, this is over $1 million of property tax based on fake development. Wasn't there. The city's job is to protect taxpayers. This hasn't occurred. The, in the two weeks, I will show you the number two and number three reasons why you're receiving more in property tax than what you're levying.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Officials and staff comments. My comments are just a thanks to everybody who came out to the Multicultural Fest, and specifically, particularly to the Park District and the team that put it all together. That's always just a fantastic event. We're fortunate, great weather, you know, and the crowds were nice-sized, great vendors. So congratulations. Go out to everybody for putting that together, and hopefully we'll see you all at the next big fest, which is the Fourth of July, Independence Day. So that's coming up soon. And a welcome to all who may come, and a thank you to all participating in that in advance, because it takes a lot of people to make that happen. So if you know anybody involved, tell them to come out and get a pat on the back for that, for the work they're putting in for the Fourth of July. Clerk? Treasure?
Two months ago, former Alderman Goodman and I went to Japan to see the Chicago Cubs play a baseball game. And while we were there, motivated in part by the Hawkesha exhibit here in, at the College of DuPage all summer, we went to the Hawkesha Museum, where there was a great exhibit about his iconic Great Wave. Well, this summer, in addition to the COD, there's 20 satellite exhibits on the waves of DuPage, focusing on the beautiful cities in DuPage. And of course, Warrenville is the most beautiful city. So there is an art decal made in the Hawkesha style, which was just installed on Friday at the library. So you can see it just when you leave City Hall. Go to the left and look in the window, and you'll get a taste of Hawkesha.
Thanks for that, Maury. That is beautiful. You get a chance to see that. Administrator, or any other alderman, sorry. Bill?
Yes, I just wanted to say, besides celebrating the arrival of summer, the month of June has a lot of other celebrations. And the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission honors federally-recognized heritage and history months as part of their commitment to build an inclusive community that values diversity. In June, we recognize, along with the city of Warrenville, the Immigration Heritage Month, National Caribbean American Heritage Month, Pride Month, and Juneteenth. So along with your words about this, the weekend's Multicultural Festival, we did enjoy great weather, and it was great to see the community welcome so many people from so many different cultures. It was a great learning opportunity and a lot of fun to bring people together and celebrate their diverse backgrounds. We even welcomed people as far away as Bloomingdale and Winfield. So Warrenville does truly welcome anyone and one and all to Warrenville. So in Warrenville, we do welcome everyone, and everyone is welcome and hopefully feels safe here. Thank you.
All right, then let's move on to the agenda. We have a need for an approval of the agenda for this meeting. John? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the June 16th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Berry. Did I hear? Alderman Wilkie, sorry. Any conversation, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a series of minutes, first being the approval of the minutes of the June 2nd City Council Regular Meeting. Ms. Alderman Widener?
Yes, motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting. And if the mayor approves, then go on and make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2025 City Council Closed Sessions 1, 2, and 3, and to approve the minutes of the June 9th, 2025 Public Works and Infrastructure Meeting.
And a motion?
Second.
Who's second then? Alderman Karkenberg? Any discussion? Efficiency is a good thing, combining things like that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the consent agenda. There are a number of items on the consent agenda, and I think I've done this twice, two different ways. Where I either read them all and then asked if you want to take anything off, or I ask if you take anything off and then read the ones that are there. Which is the appropriate way?
In the past, the, at the time the motion is made to approve the agenda for the meeting, that was when it would be appropriate time for someone to modify the agenda by removing something they might want to remove from the consent agenda. Although, you can ask again if you would like, but I assume nobody wants to take anything off. Anybody?
No. Then should I read them all first, and then we'll take them off if anybody wants? Okay. No, we're done.
I don't think, you want to just clarify whether anyone wants to take it?
So the question is, are there any items on the contention, consent agenda, that Alderman would like to have removed? Okay.
No.
And I will read the consent agenda, and we'll take it from there.
And then we just have a motion to approve it.
Okay. I'll figure this out. Give me a couple of years. So the consent agenda, omnibus vote. Item A, accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2025-30 approving a temporary use permit for temporary off-site parking at 28W 289 Warrenville Road and 3 South 580 River Road. Item B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2025-31 approving of the disposal of surplus personal property owned by the city of Warrenville. Item C, accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2025-38 approving a professional services agreement for fiscal year 2026 GIS management services with Cultivate Geospatial Solutions LLC. Item D, accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2025-39 approving an agreement with Metropolitan Industries, Inc. for lift station and water system SCADA upgrades. Item E, accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2025-40 approving a subscription agreement with Edge AI Solutions, Inc. for the provision of a camera and related software for sewer inspections. Item F, accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and accept the updates to the enterprise management and replacement plan per staff memo dated June 4, 2025, and direct staff to incorporate those adjustments into an updated EMRP document. Item G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and accept the updates to the capital maintenance and replacement plan per staff memo dated June 2, 2025, and direct staff to incorporate those adjustments into an updated CMRP document. Item H, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on March 13, 2025. Item I, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission meeting held on April 15, 2025. Item J, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on May 6, 2025. Item K, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Commission meeting held on May 13, 2025. Item L, receive and file the report of invoices paid up to June 11, 2025 in the amount of $47,596.81. Item M, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before July 7, 2025 in the amount of $251,750.32. And item N, receive and file report of Chase Commercial Card expenditures for the month of May 2025 in the amount of $39,198.68. Or 66 cents, sorry. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as seconded by Mayor Andrew Johnson.
Second.
Consent agenda, sorry.
Second by Alderman Karkenberg? Any discussion? Very well, I'll do a roll call. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. The regular agenda has two items out. The first being to accept the Public Works Committee recommendation. I imagine someone will make a motion on that. Motion first, please, if anybody would care to. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2025-41 waiving competitive bidding and approving a contract with Frank Marshall Electric Midwest LLC for Fox Hollow Lift Station generator replacement in the amount not to exceed $61,387.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Wilkie again. I was looking that way. Discussion or presentation by Mr. Kuchler first?
You might recall, I presented this last Monday at the Public Works Committee meeting. So we waived competitive bidding to purchase a generator, to replace the generator that's failing at the Fox Hollow Lift Station. And we had $75,000 budgeted for the Emerald Green Lift Station. We're shifting priorities because the Fox Hollow is a much more important one to hit right now because it's failing. We did obtain two quotes, and the lower quote was $61,387.
Any questions, comments, thoughts? All right, there's been a motion moved and seconded. All in, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is similarly about contracts, so let's, anybody care to make a motion? We'll have a discussion. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2025-41 waiving competitive bidding and approving-
Double check the resolution number.
What did I say?
Close.
All right, we're going to start over if that's okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2025-42 waiving competitive bidding and approving a new three-year software subscription agreement with Granicus for the FOIA Management Module and Citizen Engagement App in an amount not to exceed $89,140.34.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Lockett, second by Alderman Wilkie. Presentation by Assistant City Manager Morgan?
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. Included in your agenda packet this evening is a memo and a resolution recommending approval of a new three-year agreement with Granicus for two software tools that we currently use. Those are the Citizen Engagement App and the FOIA Module. Now typically, staff would present this item at a committee of the whole meeting. However, due to the length of time this matter has been discussed with Granicus, and also due to the firm deadline that they find, that they issued in the terms that we needed to finalize by the end of this month, staff is bringing this directly to the City Council. the end of this month, staff is bringing this directly to City Council for consideration this evening. In the new agreement, it's a result of nearly a year of discussions with Granicus. As you may recall, the city previously approved a broader software contract that not only included the FOIA Module, the Citizen Engagement App, it also included the city website with additional modules for the website. As staff began implementation, it became clear that the Granicus website platform did not offer the expected integration benefits with our ERP transition. After further review, staff determined that it would be in the city's best interest to discontinue the website portion of the project. Although the city was contractually obligated to pay all the fees under the original agreement, Granicus ultimately agreed to waive the final year of fees related to the website only, which is approximately $26,000, but only upon the condition that the city enter into a new three-year agreement for only these software pieces that we wish to continue to use, which is the FOIA Module and the Citizen Engagement App. The new three-year agreement covers just those two applications, and while slightly a higher annual cost, as in comparison to the original bundled pricing in our original agreement, this approach helps avoid continued payments for software tools that are no longer needed, and also ensures continuity with the software that we are currently using and continue to wish to use. It's also worth noting that while some of the upfront costs were incurred during the initial rollout, staying with Civic Plus for the city website will save money over time, and it does remain the more cost-effective option for the city. The city attorney guided and assisted staff throughout this entire process, has reviewed the agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Good. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Can you just clarify a bit what we are going to do with the website? You said we're going to deal with it later, or you have another plan in mind, or what's exactly happening? Because, for me, that was a big part of the first contract.
The Granicus website will no longer be built out. The city would remain with the existing Civic Plus website. As we began the build-out of the new Granicus website, we discovered at that time that it was not needed for the full integration with the ERP. And because of the costs associated, and with the type of design that they were presenting, we felt that it was in the city's best interest to stop at that time and continue with Civic Plus.
Do we have plans to update the website going forward, or is there no plan?
We recently did update the Civic Plus website when our communications coordinator came onboard. She worked quite a bit with Civic Plus, and we do have, it's not set, but they offer upgrades periodically. I believe it's every five years, looking at the city administrator, but I don't have that in writing, but they do offer the option to refresh the website when the time comes available.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Lockett?
So, with the FOIA and the Citizen Engagement, is that just an add-on, then, that is going to actually be on the website for Civic Plus? So when somebody goes there, will there be tabs or add-ons that they're going to use?
The FOIA Module is a separate software, completely from the website, and so is the Citizen Engagement App. However, they are accessible from our current website. So if you go to our current website and search FOIA, you'll click on a link, and it'll take you directly to the app.
Okay, great. And then, in the event that we do not renew in three years, do we keep all that data?
If we do not renew three years from now with the FOIA Module and the Citizen Engagement App.
And that database of information of who requested what for it, and who reported what on the citizen's engagement, just so that we have the history?
Sure. Typically, with software, when you transition from one software to another, the software company allows you to extract data that is needed.
Okay, great. And then, last thing, I'm not sure, I might have asked this before, but I don't remember. Is there any way to add, like, a notification app or way for those that sign up for the citizen engagements to get notified of anything, such as, like they do with, like when all our phones go beeping and off to all that? I just didn't know if that was a component of the citizen's engagement or not.
Such as an emergency notification system?
Correct.
So, we're actually working, staff is working right now with, we interviewed three separate software companies for an emergency notification system.
Okay.
Coming soon.
All right. Thank you, very much.
Anyone else? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Karkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?